Quest. And then have Wilbury tell them whether or not they ought to do it.
Yeah. Well.
And that's why we did that. It's not supposed to be discretionary.
And even then, it needs to be discretionary on our part. What if we have twelve of them come up? We don't have any more.
Well, what if every, what if every street was such and such being, and that would help us, I mean, sell quick.
I understand you.
I want to tell Robert he will quit fixing all these potholes. We'll have traffic control.
Yeah.
I guess this could continue for much, but.
Hmm, well, apparently just only forty minutes, so. He's, he's, he's the new zoning administrator. His name is Ron Anderson. Um, he's, he's pretty smart. He's got a good bit of experience, but he's, he's, he's not a know-it-all. But, um, he's got some ideas about the way they get to his other places. He was quite thoughtfully. He's going to allow donations, work plan, and really take it to really be there. Talking about really things that sound risky, like taking, he understands that there's a risk. He just sees the problem as to fix it. Anyway, he was talking about, yeah. So now we're just, we're just, you know, kind of after, you know, a little bit by.
Why not miss me?
Ah, I like it.
You did, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay.
Somehow I'm not sure how.
We'll call to order the City of Douglasville's City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, June the eleventh. Our invocation will be done by the esteemed Pastor James Harper of the First Presbyterian Church of Douglasville. After that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller. And we ask that you would please stand for the invocation, then we'll move on with the agenda.
It's good to see y'all in person. Let's pray. Gracious and holy God, as we gather tonight, thankful for the, how your hand has guided this county so well during this pandemic and have given good wisdom to these leaders to arrive at this place where they are gathering in person again. We come a gratitude, we come a gratitude also because we see so much of your faithfulness in our lives personally in this community. And I pray that we would all be people who look to you and are thankful for that. We think of the Prophet Jeremiah, who asked us to seek the welfare of our community in which we've been placed and to pray for it. And so we do that, recognizing these continued tumultuous times, that we are people in need of your continued guidance. There's times of racial inequality and upheaval. We do pray that you would bring a transformation in our community, that as the Prophet Amos declares, that there are justice rolled down like waters and righteousness like an ever-flowing stream. Long for the day when these kind of divisions are behind us, that the brokenness is healed, and we're all able to gather in unity and recognition of one another as people equally held with value and love by you and made in that identity of yours. Lord, until that day, we will continue to labor faithfully until that vision is accomplished. I give this council your wisdom and for all the challenges before them, all the questions they have to deal with tonight. And we pray these sayings in Christ's name. Amen.
The United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much, and thank you Pastor Harper for that comforting invocation and prayer. We really appreciate that. Thank you Mayor Pro Tem for the Pledge of Allegiance. And the words become more true as we say them and, and take them to heart as we strive for that in America. Uh, we will do the announcements and presentations, and then we'll move on with the agenda as presented. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council. Uh, this is a meeting where the legislative work session, my name's Rochelle Robinson, I'm Mayor of the City of Douglasville. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in whole or in part by teleconference. All of the elected officials and individuals with agenda items are present, and those wishing to comment during a public hearing or comments from citizens and delegates will be allowed to do so via audio on the Zoom software or in person. This open meeting of the Douglasville Mayor and City Council is being conducted by teleconference consistent with the Official Code of Georgia Annotated Section fifty dash fourteen one G due to emergency conditions involving public safety in order to mitigate the transmission of the coronavirus and to reduce the risk of COVID-19 illness. That code section, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows local governments to meet by teleconference in the event of an emergency, so long as means are afforded for the public to have simultaneous access to the teleconference meeting or to come in person via social distancing. And for this meeting, we are convening partially by Zoom software as shown on the city's website, describing how the public may join, which is via YouTube media platform. Instructions for the meeting tonight, all our applicants and other participants will be advised that this meeting will allow public comments as well. Even if the members of the public do not provide comment, participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comments, and listeners are not required to identify themselves. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion, and no official action will be taken tonight. Official action will be taken on these items discussed tonight on Monday evening at our, uh, our voting meeting. If the business any citizen wishes to speak on is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Item Comments from Citizens and Delegates section to discuss any other matters related to pending or potential city business. There are just a few protocol items I'd like to go over, and then we'll be prepared to go through the agenda. I would ask that you would keep your comments and presentations, presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the Chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals, and you'll receive a warning from the Chair if you deviate from this requirement. A second deviation will result in the Chair discontinuing your opportunity to speak. We ask that you, one person would speak at a time, and please do not disrupt the order of the meeting in any way. I'll remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during required public hearings. We're not required to accept public comments on other items before the council. Um, if you have a cellphone or electronic device, iPads and all of that, we ask that you would please put them in silent mode or, uh, power them off until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. Agenda items will be handled as the following. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item. Then the person representing the agenda item or its applicant will make his or her presentation first, and that will be the only opportunity for them to present. Then myself and council members, members will possibly ask questions from the applicant to seek more information. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum time of twenty minutes for those who speak in favor or in opposition of the agenda item the applicant, uh, presents, and included this time allotted. Each person has five minutes. This is different from what we are accustomed to. We used to have a thirty-minute timeframe, but the State Code OCGA thirty-six dash six-six dash five adopts policies and procedures of governing hearings. Changed the, um, meeting time in our Douglasville UDL Section twelve dash zero eight A four is that, um, we have twenty minutes collective maximum of, for presentations. So twenty minutes for those in favor, twenty minutes for those in opposition, and each person still has five minutes. And the Chair has the freedom, um, to, uh, follow these rules or to be lenient as they deem. In order to speak, a council member, um, a council meeting speaker, there's a sign-in form that you must have submitted online. If you're here in person, we ask that you would please fill that out and hand it to our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker, who is to my right in the rear. Each person has one opportunity and no reappearance. If you think of something you've forgotten, we ask that you would, um, bring all of your information at that time. This is not a question-and-answer format or debate. We're just here really to see, receive information to help us make a better decision, and we'd love to hear from, um, citizens and, uh, take all of that information to consideration as we decide on Monday as we vote. If the information, um, if you have anything that's printed, we ask that you would please, uh, present that to the city clerk, and we will be happy to hear that or receive that information from you. And, um, I believe that's it. In the totality of the twenty minutes, if we have more speakers, uh, sometimes, you know, we have, can ask that you would have a representative to, um, speak for the group so that everyone has an opportunity and all your views are heard. Now, we'll move on with the agenda as printed. Item number five is Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, sir. Finance Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight, that is to authorize city staff to advertise to solicit bids for the purchase of the city's point one-four-one acres. It's a lot at sixty-seven forty West Spring Street, and Ms. Littlefield's going to talk to us about that. Is that correct?
Yes, Ms. Hello?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, this is the parcel you recently subdivided and rezoned so that, uh, it cannot be used for any use other than a school. We're prepared now to advertise it for bidding, uh, and then to bring you those bids, uh, if you want to accept one and sell the property.
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield. For those of you, uh, that have been here for some time, correct me if I'm wrong, this was the old, was it the Water Department or the Health Department at one time?
I've heard both of those.
I beli, I believe I visited there to purchase water meters some thirty-five, forty years ago, uh, and I believe it was the Health Department. So, uh, it sits on Spring Street on the south side, and, um, the city owns it, and we're, uh, preparing to dispose of it, and this is the way that we're required to do it. So, questions, comments? Anyone? Madam Mayor?
Sir, I don't have any.
Council have any questions? Is there any public comment concerning the item? Is there any reason why, uh, Ms. Assistant City Manager, that we could not place it on the consent agenda for Monday? Or do we need to hold for a formal vote?
No, sir, you could place on the consent agenda.
I'd like to do that if possible. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Littlefield. That's all that we have under Finance. Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on to Housing and Community Affairs Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is no business under Housing and Community Affairs?
Very good. Um, number eight is Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business at this time, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Personnel Organization Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at Personnel Organization.
Thank you, sir. We'll come back around to Councilmember Adams for Planning and Development Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items tonight to discuss. First item is refer to the Planning Commission a proposal for a change in zoning from PSP, Public Semi-Public, to HI, Heavy Industrial for twelve-point-two-four acres at fourteen thirty-six Municipal Parkway and eleven-eight-five-zero Veterans Memorial Highway and Land Lot seven thirty-four, District Eighteen, Section Two, Parcel Four, and Land Lot seven forty-five, District Eighteen, Section Two, Parcel Nine. Ms. Patrice Williams, will you help us with that, please?
Sure. Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh-one Church Street. The item before you is a referral, referral to the Planning Commission for a city-initiated rezoning for property located at fourteen thirty-six Municipal Parkway and eleven-eight-five-zero Veterans Memorial Highway. The property is currently zoned PSP, uh, Public Semi-Public, and the current use is a concrete manufacturing company. Previous zoning maps and zoning certifications show the property as heavy industrial. There is no record of a change in zoning from heavy industrial to public semi-public. It is believed that during the adoption of the new Unified Development Ordinance and zoning map, the property was inadvertently zoned PSP due to the relationship with the Douglas City Development Authority, Douglas Soul City Development Authority. The current status of the property is legal non-conforming. However, this status will prevent them from expanding in the future. We ask for your favorable support of this item.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. So it sounds as though this is more of a housekeeping item. Um, I understand they've been there for many years, operating as they are operating today, and just want to make sure that they can continue to do that, correct?
And, and when I say the relationship with the City Development Authority, uh, essentially about five or six years ago, we helped them with some tax abatements. And so in our accounting system, it says that the city is the owner of the property when the city is not the owner of the property. So that's how we got the era and the map that was printed out.
Can you give me the name of the business that is there? Is this?
It's Trimron.
It is Trimron. Okay. If I'm not mistaken, I remember them coming to our city and, and, and coming in as providers of, um, concrete pavers.
Right.
Uh, I, I was on the council at that time, and that's how they came in. They came into an old concrete, uh, structure, infrastructure, uh, storm drain, head walls, things of that nature. That was the operation that was there prior. Okay. Questions, comments?
There wasn't, there was, there was also a steel fabricating facility on that location. Was there, am I thinking of the right property?
Not, not that I'm aware of. It was a concrete, concrete plant.
Right.
Is this near the, that auction place? I might be on the wrong street then.
Any warehouses?
Okay, maybe not. That might be the other.
This is on bank, this is on Veterans Memorial between Douglasville and the Old Clearview Community.
My bad.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Then we will take that up on Monday night for a vote. Thank you. Next item. Hold a public hearing and consider a proposed ordinance to amend subsection six-point-oh-five F-two-D of Appendix A, the Unified Development Ordinance, to add fiber cement board as allowed exterior finished materials for side and rear building facades in the Quality Growth Development. QDG Overlay District, application by City of Douglasville, Ms. Patrice Williams again.
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh-one Church Street. This item was referred by Mayor and Council to the Planning Commission at the June first Legislative Work Session. In process in a previous application, staff discovered an oversight regarding allowable uses for fiber cement board siding. While fiber cement board siding was allowed on the fronts of buildings, it was not allowed, uh, it was not allowable use for side and rear building facades within the Community Quality Growth Development Overlay District. Item twenty dash one-four-seven was approved at the March sixteen Legislative Work Session by Mayor and Council with the understanding that sta, staff would be requesting a change in the city's code. We ask for your favorable consideration for this item.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. This being a public hearing, uh, we do need to hear from either side, whether it be in support or whether it be in objection to. And again, this is a housekeeping item from a, a previous action that, uh, did not include this type of material on the sides and rear of buildings. Is there anyone here in addition to, uh, Ms. Williams that would speak on behalf of the item in favor or in opposition to it? Please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and we'll take this item up on Monday, and we thank you, Ms. Williams. Last item. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a change in zoning from PUD, Planned Unit Development, with base zone of R-six Single Family Attached Apartment Residential District to LI Light Industrial for ninety-five-point-oh-five-two acres, Land Lot one-sixty-nine, District One, Section Five, Parcel Four. Application by IDI Logistics LLC. Ms. Williams, can you introduce us to this, please?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh-one Church Street. The applicant, Ideologistis LLC, has requested to rezone Land Lot one-sixty-nine, District One, Section Five and Parcel Four of approximately ninety-five-point-oh-five-two acres from R-six PUD to Light Industrial for the development of two warehouse facilities, one six-hundred-and-five-thousand square feet, and the second one, four-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-six-hundred-square-foot, feet warehouse on property located on Riverside Parkway. Please note, with the adoption of the new UDO, the zoning category DCD is now PUD. However, the original DCD Tributary New Manchester ordinances have been pulled forward, are grandfathered in. In reviewing the application and other supplemental information, it is the determination of staff that the rezoning will further the purpose of the comprehensive plan. The current comprehensive plan shows this parcel as mixed-use design character area. The purpose of a mixed-use design character concept is to encourage the best possible site plan and building arrangement under a unified plan of development. The concept benefits from better land utilization, economy, and the proven provision of roads, utilities, and flexibility in design. The comprehensive plan lists the following zones for this character area: DCD, CG, R-two, O-I, R-three, R-four, R-six, IL, R-six-T, CN, and I. The properties located to the north and west of the subject property are currently functioning as light industrial. Staff has determined that the subject property located on Riverside Parkway has a land use map designation of mixed use. The proposed rezoning of the subject property from PUD to LI is feasible and compatible with the City of Douglas Soul land use map. Finally, the proposed rezoning from PUD to LI will not result in a change in the underlying land use. Due to the size of the development, the development, a development regional impact, DRI, was required and completed by the Atlanta Regional Commission and the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority. The local trigger for the DRI was the request for rezoning. As part of the DRI and as a requirement of the city code, a traffic study was completed, and it meets the requirements specified in the City of Douglas Soul UDO. In reviewing the application, comments from the Douglas Soul Police Department, Atlanta Regional Commission, and the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority, Douglasville Douglas County Water and Sewer Authority, City of Douglas Soul Project Manager, and the Douglas Soul Building Division have been provided and are included in the staff report. In addition, staff has included a map in your packet that highlights the projects in review. They're in purple, and the approved projects are in green. At this time, staff is able to take your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Uh, we will give the applicant then, uh, time to come and present, uh, in favor of this, and then we will have a time for anyone else that would like to speak in support or in opposition. I believe Madam Mayor has already given us those timeframes, and I apologize if they are different from potentially the last public hearings that we had, uh, some time ago. But we will take that into consideration. Uh, would the applicant come forward and present, please?
Yes, sir. Joe Fowler, Post Office Box Forty-nine. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Allow me to introduce Mr. Nick Faber, the Vice President and Marketing Officer for the Appellant IDI, or the Applicant IDI Logistics Incorporated. Mr. Dan Winemeyer, the Design Engineer on this project, and get a little of this. He's been the engineer on all IDI projects for the last twenty-five years in Douglas County. He's available by phone to answer any design or engineering-related questions he may have. The Traffic Engineer is Mr. Randy Parker. He did the traffic study for use in connection with the DRI, both before the ARC and Greta, and he is available by phone if we need to get in touch with him. Ms. Kathy Zickert, a lawyer in Atlanta and a friend of mine, appeared for IDI before the Planning and Zoning Commission. She, however, is high-risk for the virus, like many in this situation, and she asked for permission to be excused from the meeting tonight. I told her I thought that'd be okay. As you know, the applicant is IDI Logistics, and as you've heard summarized, it has applied for the rezoning of this vacant ninety-five acres along Riverside Parkway at the intersection with Roberts Road. And as you are aware, the Planning Commission voted last Tuesday to recommend approval of the request. The property lies roughly two-thousand-five-hundred feet east of the American Red Cross facility, and it's right at six-thousand feet or a bit over a mile east of the residential component of Tributary. The property is bounded on the west, as I mentioned, by Roberts Road, and that is the roadway that leads to the Water and Sewer Authority Sewer Treatment Plant. Concerning background for IDI, the council is aware that this company is no stranger to Douglasville, and in its twenty-five years of building in our county, it has developed a total of eighteen total buildings. Its most recent is in the city limits, and it's the intersection of Blair's Bridge Road near Bob Arnold Boulevard. IDI, more than that, actually owns and develops warehouse spaces through the entire country. It's been in business and headquartered in Atlanta for more than thirty years. It has six regional offices. Their properties exceed fifty-five million square feet. In Atlanta, they've developed over forty million square feet, including the eighteen buildings in the I-twenty West Corridor in Douglas County. That's over twelve million square feet owned and operated by them. All of their properties in our county are one-hundred percent leased, which makes an interesting point, and that is the need for communities to adapt to the rapid shift to internet, online shopping in our day. In fact, I saw one source in the last few days that says what we've all come to realize, and that's this. This form of electronic commerce is probably going to be here indefinitely, based on the fact that there are more than ninety percent of the American population that have and will continue to engage in online shopping. So what you see before you tonight with respect to these two buildings is IDI's effort to address the facility needs of entities that are actually making this form of commerce possible. Industry experts even suggest that, given the change in consumer shopping habits, there'll be an even greater need for logistics and warehousing facilities in our county and elsewhere around our country. Now, we understand that it doesn't come without an impact of some description, and primarily because this kind of shopping means that trucks have to get the products to the areas where people like ourselves order those products, and I'll come back to that in just a few minutes. First, it may be helpful to look at the zoning history with respect to this property. This parcel, ninety-five acres, was originally part of the city's annexation and rezoning of the original, what was then called New Manchester on November the third, nineteen ninety-seven. Our firm was involved in that. At that point, the entire parcel of over two-thousand acres was zoned Light Industrial in the county. The designation was actually called M-one-S-R, meaning semi-restricted. It authorized uses of this precise nature. And when it was annexed and the whole area was given the name New Manchester, the acreage came in as PUD Residential. But just two years later, importantly, on December the twentieth, nineteen ninety-nine, the PUD was substantially revised, renamed as Design Concept Development District, or DCD as we know it, and it was assigned one of four land use categories: Town Center, Urban Center, Business Center, and East Hills, each of which had roughly five-hundred acres. Now, the ninety-five acres before you tonight was included in the Urban Center. That portion was speci, was specifically five-hundred-fifty-two acres, and the Urban Center au, authorized, excuse me, Light Industrial uses exactly as the former county zoning. In fact, here's the drawing adopted as part of that ordinance change. And what you see also, walking around this month, what you see is the area of the property in question. This is where we are tonight. Right here, and all of that purple area is Urban Center. Light Industrial is authorized. Would you see? It is part of the attachments, yes, sir. And I'm showing the boards only because you may have a hard time flipping through and getting to it. Okay, just put it right there. As the council knows, there have been a number of amendments to the DCD over the years, and here are just a few that have some impact on the acreage before you tonight. On October the fifth, two thousand and one, the Urban Center on our property totaling the four-hundred-and-fifty-two acres, I'm sorry, the five-hundred-and-fifty-two acres was ratified and affirmed, just as it had been in nineteen ninety-nine. Urban Center on this property accommodating Light Industrial. However, on November the sixteenth, two thousand four, our area and a portion of the surrounding acreage went to Town Center with a C G base zone, which interestingly nonetheless permitted business uses, and that was an entire five hundred fifty-two acres. The whole tract that was formerly Urban Center was changed to Town Center, but with a business or C G base zone. Plus, there were two extensively solely residential components added, north of Riverside Parkway, extending from Sweetwater Creek all the way over toward Camp Creek Parkway. That was done at that time. It was changed to residential. Then in April of two thousand five, the ninety-five acre tract was changed from commercial, general commercial, to an R six base zone, which is what it is today. In September two thousand six, the city approved the location of the Red Cross Project on nineteen acres just west of this ninety-five acre site. You know where it's located with respect to the proximity to this parcel. But then on November the third, two thousand eight, the market was not absorbing any of the residentially designated property, and at that time, the city essentially went back to the original nineteen ninety-nine concept of Business Center, including light industrial, for the area east of Sweetwater Creek, all the way over near to Thornton Road, really Summer Lake Road. All of that shifted November the third, two thousand eight, on the application of Tributary to be rezoned to light industrial. Now, that's north of the road, but that's that section. And then finally, on September the third, two thousand thirteen, the city approved the Rooker Development in that same general area near Sweetwater Creek, and it was converted from R six base zone to light industrial. Now, the point of all of that is this. As a result of these actions accumulated together, the New Manchester Project, from Camp Creek Parkway on the east, all along Riverside Parkway going west, and then beyond Sweetwater Creek to the McMaster Carr Facility, the city assigned all of that a light industrial base zone with a couple of exceptions. One existing apartment complex that's right along Summer Lake Road, one that was recently rezoned by the city in that area for apartments, and then, of course, the Tributary at New Manchester subdivision just across Riverside Parkway from that apartment complex. Since that rezoning action by the city in two thousand eight, a total of thirteen industrial facilities have been developed in that corridor with Kihei and McMaster Carr as the most recently added to that area. The Red Cross facility is twenty-five hundred feet further down Riverside from this site. And that's the history of the zoning actions taken regarding this property according to the city's records. But with one final note, as Ms. Williams mentioned, this property is in the mixed-use category in the city's comprehensive plan, and as she noted, light industrial is specifically permitted in that classification. That is, this is not and cannot be argued to be spot zoning. Now, as for the specific project, you know that it anticipates the construction of two warehouses, one at four hundred fifty-three thousand six hundred square feet, the second six hundred five, six hundred five thousand eight hundred square feet. The first to be built will be the four hundred fifty-three thousand. The six hundred thousand will come later, subject to the approval of a stream encroachment. And you may have the plan before you, but here it is. Now, as you know, the proposal had to be submitted to the four A D R I, to the A R C and Greta, and following the lengthy review process and an examination of the detailed traffic study, the project was recommended for approval without conditions on April the first, twenty twenty, just a bit over two months ago. Here are three photographs of the proposed structure. This is pretty awkward having people around the room, so I apologize for that. Nick, if you'll just help me up here.
This is precisely the type of building that is proposed for these locations. It is not unlike what was constructed there on Blair's Bridge Road. This is an evening view of the sun and facility. We've got these photos computerized on the air. And this is larger than the other that's supposed to be here, but here is a larger view of this side.
We've also prepared a landscape plan for Building One, which will be the first to be constructed, primarily because its proximity to Riverside Parkway. And here are the designs that have been prepared. These require a closer look.
But this is the edge of Building One, close in proximity to Riverside Parkway, and not these before you. This is the area of view.
Check the neighborhood to the degree that landscaping bears on that issue. The planning staff reviewed the project, as you heard, including the traffic study, its recommended approval to the council, and importantly, the staff made these observations in its analysis. First, the proposed rezoning to light industrial is consistent with the purpose intent of the U D O. It's consistent with the purpose intent of the comprehensive future land use map as well. Secondly, the proposed use promotes the public health, safety, and general welfare in that it is, as noted, a catalyst for further mixed-use development in that area. From that general overview, the staff made several recommendations. One, incorporate open space of thirty percent of the gross land area. And what I would note is on this ninety-seven acre parcel, only sixty-five acres are disturbed, so we meet that, thirty percent. Next, to add a landscape buffer along Riverside Parkway, Roberts Road, and the West Property Line, we consent, of course, to that recommendation. We've already proposed the landscape plan that you just saw. And then, number three, provide connectivity to adjacent parcels through sidewalks and roadways. I D I, of course, work with staff at the plan review stage to make that happen as much as possible, given site conditions and specifically stream setbacks and topo. If you look at the overhead, what you see is streams actually border both sides of the properties. Now, about traffic concerns, which I know is the principal issue for many of the people who live in the Tributary subdivision. At the Planning Commission, there were concerns expressed regarding the impact of traffic on Riverside. In fact, in the A R C Greta approval of the project, this statement was made. "The D R I's site design should provide sufficient truck parking to prevent trucks from queuing or waiting on any adjacent or nearby streets." And it continued, "Trucks parking in and along public roadways, typically while waiting for an available dock at a nearby facility. That is an identified issue in many areas of the region, and it negatively impacts roadway operations, safety, and congestion. Signage and other measures to ensure drivers use the appropriate freight routes should be emphasized." Well, that's not a new issue for I D I in every one of its facilities, and we're aware that it's a great concern for the citizens in Tributary. Here's the response that I D I provided in light of the A R C Greta concern. Here's the quote. "I D I designs buildings to maximum tenant efficiency with design elements that deal with truck queuing. Our design is depicted in the site plan allows for maximum onsite truck queuing of sixteen trucks in the upper driveway of the smaller building and nine trucks on the lower entry road, and that's done in order to avoid any illegal parking and traffic queuing where trucks would wait in line to get through security or be granted access into a truck court. This is a routine feature for I D I and is highly desired by tenants and by the local governments in which it develops its own property. It eliminates the need to park or queue on any major road." By the way, the plan for this property, this first building, is for drivers to enter that facility by the upper or longer driveway and offloading. So when you look at that site plan, you see the long one and then the smaller. It works perfect from a design standpoint because sixteen places, sixteen trucks, seventy feet each, can queue up there to avoid the problem of backing out onto Riverside Parkway. I will note this. By contrast, the Kihei entrance has space for the queuing of only two tractor trailers, which we understand accounts for some at least of the current concerns that have been raised about Riverside. If there were more room, as on this ninety-five acre site, perhaps there could have been more queuing provided with Kihei. By the way, I'll also note that I D I facilities are all twenty-four seven operations, which facilitates the movement of goods and trucks through the building and out of their destination. Now, quickly in wrapping up, concerning traffic volumes, we know that is a concern. Mr. Parker, the Traffic Engineer, Mr. Parker explained that truck drivers who deliver and haul loads prefer to do so in off-peak hours in order to avoid rush hour traffic. Many who drive down that roadway probably would take issue with that, but that comes from, that concept comes from the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, tenth edition, and it comes from data collected at similar facilities across the country. I would also note this. The specific traffic counts reveal that in the morning peak hour for this facility, by the way, morning peak is always gauged between one hour, sixty minutes, between seven and nine A M. And what he concluded... All right. Thank you very much. A total of seven outbound trucks, twenty-five inbound. In the afternoon hours, it is, and by the way, that's when the trucks are going in the opposite direction. It is thirty-one outbound going in the opposite direction, twelve inbound. The Trip Generation Manual also notes that deliveries to warehouses are genuinely distributed during the middle hours of the day between ten and four and not during commuting hours. If this site were developed as it is currently zoned or as commercial, the traffic volume would be substantially higher. He told me more than three times that, which you would expect with a warehouse. Summary, I D I requests the opportunity to continue its investment in the City of Douglasville. It's not only a project that, when built out, will generate more than seven hundred thousand dollars in property taxes, but it'll be an employment generator. This property's set vacant since two thousand five. With the R six base, we believe this is appropriate use. Thank you. Apologize for going over, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Just realize that, of course, you have used all the time that you might have allotted to anyone else that may want to speak in support, but I'm assuming that you all had planned it that way. Yes. Questions of council for the applicant? Yes, Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Fowler and Mr. Winemeyer. I do have a few questions, and I will start by saying thank you so much. It was very comprehensive, all the information that you've given us, and we have a plethora of information. There's a hundred and forty-six pages inside of our tablet, so it's a lot going on. And I would say that to say with this project in this area, as you mentioned, Mr. Fowler, that it's changed in two thousand four, two thousand six, two thousand eight, two thousand thirteen, that we need to be pliable and really meet the needs of the area and the people that live there and businesses as well. I believe you said that this proposed facility would be one mile from residence. Is that correct?
Yes, over.
Just over a mile. So, in theory, a lot of the concerns with the truck parking for Kihei, and I understand you're saying that the bays will hold beyond what other facilities will hold, and I don't want to call anyone else out, any other business, and be detrimental toward that facility, but that this would hold many more trucks, and so it would not be sitting on Riverside Parkway, because that is a great concern. I've received pictures and throughout my time being mayor that there's, it's an issue, a continual, constant issue of trucks on Riverside Parkway, which really pose a danger, a safety issue. So that is one of my concerns. In theory, it sounds great, but sometimes you have something that is, you know, it's in theory, but it isn't actual, the actuality of what happens, so we don't know because it hasn't been built yet, if it were to be. And I know that also you mentioned, so that's the issue, the concerns with traffic. Then the concern about compatibility, saying that the D C D and P U D and all that is compatible for the area, but is it the best and highest use? The base zone is R six, and so sometimes if it's an area where it's residential and a mile from residential, and it becomes something other than residential, it could take the life out of the area and the people that live there who want, if you have thirteen industrial facilities already, and you know you have a home and the property values and all of that, to bring two more facilities that's residential. If it's based R six, maybe something creative could be done to have industrial with apartments or R six somewhere mixed in, since it's a mixed-use development. So those are some of the major concerns that I have. The uniformity, I don't know if we have a shortage of warehouses. Do we, do we need more warehouses in the area?
The studies suggest that there will always be a growing need for warehouses. I looked at a study, national study, that said there's a need of, shockingly, more than eight hundred and fifty million square feet of additional warehouse space needed in the country at large. If you look around the metro area, you see the warehouses coming, and that's because we, as a community, not just this community, but as a nation, people, are making it necessary for these things to occur.
Yes, sir.
We are not as close as McMaster Carr, Tributary, and I recognize that there's an application before the city that would stop any further warehouse encroachment going that way between McMaster Carr and the city, because there's a request for apartments and some commercial that you'll be considering rather soon. For this particular property, the staff concluded that this is the highest and best use, but the council has to make that final determination.
Yes, sir. And the last thing with traffic, Mr. Chairman, is I know with the peak hours and that's a great plan to have twenty-four hours with trucks, you know, going into the facility, but if you're sleeping, that twenty-four hours isn't good because it may wake you. I'm a light sleeper, so if a car drives down the street, I can hear it, and I can just imagine if a truck is coming, and it's a mile away, I can hear that as well. So it may be intrusive to the people who live there. And warehouses are great and facilities, and my kids get stuff since they've been home from college and school. Every day, we're receiving something that they've ordered, but you know, there's an area for that to have warehouses and kind of not mixed in with residential if it's intrusive in the area. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much, though, for your presentation. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, for Tim, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I have a few comments, more so than questions. I consider myself an educated person, and I even have a bit of a background in urban planning, but even I am, sometimes I struggle to understand our city's zoning complex. As Mr. Fowler very interestingly described the history of the property, it sounds like a a tennis match of zoning applications, it goes back and forth, and so we've got, we've got overlay districts upon overlay districts. And I think that if I'm struggling with understanding how the zoning works, I can just imagine what the rest of the public must think when they see something like this. The other concern I have is, well, a couple. The, looking through the recommendation the staff had provided, I would be curious to know, you know, there's a comment that basically says it's rated compatible with the current land use plans, the future land use plans and zoning, but I would, I would be very curious to know what our ratio of describing what's compatible versus what isn't compatible that comes through as an application. I don't know if anybody could answer that, and I'm not expecting it at the moment. Also, you touched upon the traffic study, and again, this comes back to trying to understand what we're looking at. I mean, we're bombarded with a lot of tables and statistics on the traffic. All I can think of is what Mark Twain said, that there were lies, damn lies, and statistics. And frankly, the, the traffic study seems to obviously indicate that, that the traffic impact would be minimal, but I'd like to know if, if anybody has thought about it from this perspective. Okay, if we say that this development is going to add, you know, I mean, two to five percent, I'm just throwing the number out there, two to five percent, let's say, of additional traffic on the roads, which doesn't have a major impact, okay? We can, we can absorb that, it's not a problem. But the issue becomes in the next development that comes along, which also adds another five percent to the traffic, and your baseline has now moved. So we say, well, five percent additional traffic isn't that much, we can, we can absorb that. And then the next development comes along, and that says, well, the baseline is now that much higher, but five percent more traffic, what's the big deal? And then before we know it, we wake up and suddenly we're in gridlock, because we've just been like the frog in the pot that just had the temperature of the water raised a little bit of time, it doesn't know it's boiling. That's an issue. Also, looking at the, the bigger map of the Tributary area, and you see the tremendous amount of warehouse development along Fulton Industrial and Thornton Road and the area, which makes sense. I mean, that's, it's zoned for that, and we, and that's kind of what we want. We, we've made that bargain, we accept that. The concern I have is looking at how that, some of that warehouse development is now starting to encroach upon the residential areas in Tributary and, and other, even some of the areas that are outside the city, but you're starting to see that it's growing and, and coming in that direction. You've got over a million square feet under roof on these two buildings. That's, by my calculation, that's twenty-four acres of building. The other concern is environmental, because what we're doing by adding these structures, you're creating an, what's called a heat island, and the people who are living nearby are going to start to notice a change in their climate. It's going to get hotter in these areas by creating these heat islands, and that's what Fulton Industrial basically is, is a big heat island, and that encroachment into this, into what is now green space. Maybe there's, there's not an ideal use, whether it's, whether it's industrial versus apartments versus houses, but frankly, you know, leaving it green isn't a bad option. But I think that, looking at the, the history of the zoning of the, and, and clearly there's been some back and forth over what's happened or what way we've interpreted wanting to see that property develop, and I think that just repeating the mistakes of the past isn't though necessarily a, a good way to look at that. If we, if we didn't get it right before, now is our opportunity, we need to get it right, so. Mr. Chair, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Coach Watts.
One question I have, Mr. Fowler, or anybody can answer this. In the ARC report that's in the attachments, it was addressed to Mayor Robinson, it talks about the environmental importance of that area, and one of the things, and I'll, and I'll just quote this, it's easier than, "Please see the attached comments from ARC's National Resource Group regarding unresolved question regarding the property's past exemption from MRPA review under previous development proposal at the same location. Questions have not been resolved as of writing of these comments and could have a material impact on the feasibility of the current proposal." So I was curious about that, and I got something else to follow up with.
Yes, sir. The Metropolitan River Protection Act is the act about which you're speaking, and when this property was approved with the original DRI before the ARC and the other entities that are involved, it was granted an exemption from MRPA. MRPA requires a two-thousand-foot setback from the Chattahoochee. This property was exempted from it. That occurred nineteen eighty-four, I believe. I've got the documents in my file, but that's when it occurred. It was granted an exemption.
The, the other question is about the long-term multi-use trail that has been discussed, Chattahoochee, that's supposed to go along the Chattahoochee River, and what impact would this have? Because it says that the trail goes along Riverside Parkway east of the site, then along the southern boundary of the DRI property near the river.
South of this property.
So is, this property will not affect...
No encroachment on it.
All right. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Coach Watts. Anyone else? Yes, Madam Mayor, go ahead.
I apologize. So I do see the, and I saw that earlier from ARC. So, Mr. Fowler, you're saying, because it does say you're in the floodplain and at the Chattahoochee River. So you're saying with this comment, where it says the general area is extremely important from environmental standpoint, that you are grandfathered in, that you're...
Yes, that's essentially it. Yes, ma'am.
It's on page twenty-three, twenty-three and twenty-four. But it did say on the other, for WSA, that you were in the floodplain and that there were still requirements for, for the Chattahoochee. So is that you're a thousand feet away or five hundred versus a two thousand?
It was granted an exemption from MRPA, which is two thousand.
Okay.
And there's correspondence recently from the DNR that affirms that exemption, and I'll be more than glad to provide a copy to Susan and to staff if they don't have that already. It's an issue that began at or near the time the ARC was completing its final recommendation concerning the DRI. And Mrs. Zickert actually handled all of that, and I was hoping she could be here, but she was reluctant to do so. But she has the letter, I've got a copy of it, and I'll be more than glad to provide it.
So you're exempt from that, but it does, on this page forty-six, it says that, is the property in the floodplain? Yes. And number eight, state waters present on the property. Property is in the Chattahoochee River Basin, a fifty-foot undisturbed stream buffer applies. Floodplain on the property. So you still have those requirements, but not the two thousand and thousand. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. You're welcome.
Streamback buffers always apply.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? I had just a couple of questions. Mr. Fowler, and this may really be referred to our police department, you had mentioned that IDI had developed eighteen buildings in the, in the, in our community, whether it be city or county, within the last eighteen years.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not sure if our city, if our police chief, city assistant, city assistant police chief, Ms. Shaw, can answer this, but I would be interested to see what complaints have been given to our city police department concerning IDI's locations, just as a way to verify the truck queuing and the problem or lack thereof within, within the, within the city. I know that the one that was just completed here a couple of years ago on the other end, up on Thornton Road, and I believe off Bob Arnold, that would be interesting to see that. That's one point I wanted to make. And did I hear you say that the traffic study and the ARC's report said that if it were to remain R six and go with multifamily apartments, then you would have three times the traffic?
That's not in the ARC report. That came from the traffic engineer.
From the traffic engineer, okay? Because I, I want to make sure that, that our viewing audience, everyone here that's present realizes that, again, there's a decision to be made. There's some trade-offs to be done within this decision that we have to make, in that the, the community needs to be aware of how it is presently zoned and make sure that you understand that if something like this is not done, is not agreed to, is not approved, then it would, it would still be zoned R six with, for multifamily, okay? So I mean, there is some decision there that has to be made, and unfortunately for, for us, that's a decision that we have to make. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows that. Go ahead, Mr. Fowler.
I apologize for interrupting. The traffic engineer told me specifically that one fast-food restaurant, if it were go-to, for example, something like CG, one fast-food McDonald's restaurant would produce as much or more traffic than the entire warehouse operation, if it's a fast-food restaurant with a...
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, if there are no other questions or comments of the applicant, then I will begin the time for those that would like to speak in opposition. Understand that we did give some additional time to the applicant, and so we want to make sure that we do the same for those speaking in opposition. Can Ms. Sacker or Ms. Jackson, can you give us an idea of how much additional time we gave?
Yes, the total time was twenty-one minutes, forty-five seconds.
Then we want to make sure that we give those in opposition at least that much time, just to be fair.
Additional time?
No, the additional time was one minute, forty-five seconds. So the additional time that we gave Mr. Fowler to speak was one minute, forty-five seconds.
Not counting all the questions he answered.
That is correct. Yes, sir, that's correct, Mr. Sisk. Yes, yes. That is not a part of the time that you have to be allotted for. You have twen-, your group has twenty minutes to speak in opposition, plus that additional time at least.
Okay.
Okay? Go ahead.
First of all, kind of not used to talking to y'all all around the room, but my name is Philip Sisk. I live at ninety-nine oh five Ardwick Greenway, Douglasville, in Tributary. And imagine fourteen years ago when I bought my property and had my house built, this community of single-family homes built on what some people would say postage-stamped lots, with porches and sidewalks, where we sit on the porch every day, talk to our neighbors walking up and down the street. What a wonderful place it is, if you can imagine. And imagine all the things that our community plans, residents plan, turkey fries, chili cook-offs, New Year's Eve parties. We even sponsored golf tournaments that raised over a hundred and ten thousand dollars for high school students to continue their education. And fourteen years later, we have thirteen warehouses encroaching on us. Of course, before, I want to talk to you about Tributary a little more. I'd like to, although I like Mr. Fowler, I think there's a conflict of interest in the fact that he is the attorney that represents the Douglas County Economic Development Authority, and now he's representing IDA, IDI, and his firm also owns the Tributary Sales Center and the plot of land next to it. It seems to me there's some conflict of interest there. I'll leave that up to, for y'all to determine, but he also read off all these dates where the zoning had been done, but the important one was in two thousand and five, when it was zoned DCD with a base zone of R six multifamily. And we thought we were going to have twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty houses at that time, but then we know what happened in two thousand and seven, and Douglasville Development, as well as Avanti, they're land investors, and they don't make any money if they don't sell the property that they've purchased in the past. And for almost two years, Douglasville Development didn't make any money because nobody was building and nobody was buying property to build houses on. And so at that time, they came through with, and, and as I, I believe, Mayor Robinson, you were on the city council when you approved that original in two thousand and five, and nobody could have foreseen what was going to happen in the warehouses that would be built. And then in two thousand and seven, when that happened, and in two thousand and eight, I think you were on the city council then, when we even Tributary supported the change to light industrial, because we saw the pain that Douglasville Development was suffering with no sales for years. And so, but again, I don't think anybody could have foreseen what was coming. As you pointed out, one warehouse, and then another warehouse, and then another warehouse, until it's just right at our front door almost. And then Ron Orr pushed a zoning, a rezoning through the back door and got the Rooker property rezoned, and after making promises to us that he didn't keep. So I'm asking the city council to deny this rezoning request. I'll be followed by other people who'll also detail the negative impact that the warehouses have had on our community and the positive impact that less warehouses and more family homes would add to our community. Now, IDI won't be penalized for not getting this property. They can find other property to develop, but it'll impact us as homeowners, our property values and our way of life. And I'd rather have a McDonald's and all the cars that that would bring than all the trucks that these warehouses would bring, even though it, it would be less trucks, no doubt, but I'll take the cars in exchange for those trucks. And let me just, one other thing, if I've got it here. The staff did not say that this was what it should be. The staff said it didn't violate anything. So I don't want you, Mr. Fowler said the staff encouraged this. No, they didn't. They said it didn't violate anything, so at this time, thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sisk. Someone else? If you would, Mr. Sisk is aware of, of the protocol. No, you, you just wanted the balance of your five minutes. We understand, that's fine, no problem. No, actually, just make sure, for those of you that may not have been before us before, he already knew the protocol. Just come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and we would, we would love to hear from you.
Thank you so much. In the interest of time, please excuse, that I'm going to read. So, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen at the city council. My name is Aleah Roberts, and my home is at three-two-one-nine Blackley Old Road in the Tributary subdivision. I'm here today to oppose the rezoning of this parcel from R six residential to light industrial on the grounds of the increased tractor-trailer traffic on Riverside Parkway will cause an increased damage to our infrastructure, undue burden on my neighborhood, and poses safety hazard to all drivers on Riverside Parkway. Let me start by quoting a federal study by the Comptroller General's report to Congress that found that road damage from one eighteen-wheeler is equivalent to the impact of ninety-six-hundred cars. This is based on the assumption that a fully-loaded tractor-trailer weighs eighty-thousand pounds, twenty times that of a passenger vehicle. Whereby the, the wear and tear caused by the truck is exponentially greater than that of a car. It has been proven in many, many studies that our nation's infrastructure is crumbling at the weight of increased truck traffic on any given roadway, and it's evident today with all the visible damage to Riverside Parkway. I ask you, have you attempted to make a turn from Riverside Parkway to Thornton Road in any direction? The ruts on the sides of the road are so large that I fear for my safety when I'm making those turns. What scares me most on that is that's the damage I can see. What's being done to address the unseen damage to a roadway caused by all of this truck traffic? The county made an investment of bike lanes on Riverside Parkway, which unfortunately to many athletes in the community are unusable. The damage caused to them by the trucks is only half of the problem. The other half is due to trucks using them as a parking lot while they wait for their turn to be led into their respective distribution center. The number of trucks parked on the side of Riverside Parkway on any given day is absurd and downright dangerous. They block a driver's view and obstruct the safe passageway that was created for bicyclists. Increased truck traffic will only make this problem worse, especially when you consider that the applicant's traffic study indicated that there would only be a net increase of eight trucks. But how exactly are eight trucks going to have a measurable impact on e-commerce, as Mr. Fowler indicated? Besides, they're planning for a combined twenty-five trucks in their queuing plan, but yet the traffic study indicated only eight trucks difference. Really don't see how that lines up. Furthermore, my community has had to pay the price, literally, of the truck, truck traffic on Riverside Parkway. In the past eight months, our beautiful welcome pillars at the front of our community have been smashed to smithereens, twice. First in October and again in December. They've only just been repaired again. We've had deep ruts driven through the grass on our entranceways, knocked-down roadside, had to place large boulders just to discourage the trucks from making turns in our neighborhood. And who's going to continue to pay that bill? The... The truck traffic on Riverside has reached a tipping point, and we cannot stand as a community to see another truck added to the road as a result of any more distribution centers, and that starts with your denial of this request submitted by IDI Logistics. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Someone else? Please, if I could just, just ask you to make sure that you're providing us with new information so that we receive all the information possible concerning your concerns without repetition, okay? Because we are limited in time. How are you, sir?
I'm good. I'll try to keep it short. So...
Name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry. My name is Conrad Kiffin. I live at thirty-two-fourteen Ann Coach Street in Douglasville, Georgia, three-zero-one-three-five, in the Tributary Village Community. And speaking of which, so it's, we moved in there about six months ago, seven months ago. We, we saw the community. We thought it was amazing, not just from a visual standpoint, but the mix of people, ages, you know, races, everything. It was just an amazing neighborhood. The surrounding area, gorgeous. The few warehouses that were there were becoming an issue just for getting to work in the mornings, and also for coming home. I cannot imagine what, what life would be like with more warehouses on that stretch. Somebody mentioned Thornton Road and Fulton Industrial. Those are great roads for building warehouses and, and distribution centers. If you look at those roads, they're completely different in the feel of Riverside. This Riverside Parkway can't handle that kind of volume. It's, it's not, it's not a truck road, basically. My wife and I are also cyclists, and we don't use that road, as somebody mentioned before, for that reason. One million square feet is a large project. I don't know that, that would look right in the area. It would certainly affect our quality of life. Somebody mentioned the, the environmental impact. And that's, that's not something that we're, we're happy to live with for our resale value and just our, our own happiness. Let's see what else I have here. You know, it's not necessarily about traffic. It's, it's about having a place that you can live and raise your family. It's, currently, it's, it's, it's a beautiful place to be right now, Riverside Parkway. And I'm speaking more from emotion than from anything else, because facts matter, but so does the real-world implication of our decisions. So I ask you guys to consider this as a, as a no vote for this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Someone else?
Good evening. My name is Asmeer Davis. I live at three-two-zero-nine Ann Coach Street, Douglasville, also in the Tributary neighborhood. I won't reiterate all the points that have been made around concerns as to why I oppose this traffic, just lifestyle, and the community that we wish and hope to live in. I wanted to actually address a point that the applicant brought up in regards to the increased demand in e-commerce shopping and therefore resulting in an increased demand for warehouses. As a marketing strategist, I am an expert on market trends, particularly as it pertains to consumer behaviors. And one of the things that I would like the committee to think about is the fact that the key demographic that's driving that increase in e-comm is also driving the demand for residential, and those are millennials. And a recent Nielsen study actually said that sixty-nine percent of millennials said that they prefer to live in communities with mixed use of retail and residential. And as we think about what's happening in the Atlanta metro area, as these millennials are aging, becoming, growing families, and have increased shopping power, not only in e-comm, but also in housing, they will be looking to expand outside of the Atlanta metro area because prices are becoming even more inflated. Another thing I'd like to bring up is the recent pandemic has also caused a lot of people to rethink living in urban centers, and working remotely has become a reality for most people, meaning that the idea of living in town, where most people were doing that for traffic reasons, not having to commute. Another study that I would like to bring up by the Pew Research Center says that sixty-nine percent of people working from home has said, sorry, say that their work from home has spiked considerably and that they will consider moving out of their existing urban area into a less populated area where they can have the same resources without a commute. So I just wanted to throw that out there as we think about the vision for Douglasville, the vision for this corridor in Riverside, as well as the considerations of the residents that currently reside in the area.
Thank you, ma'am. Someone else? How are we on time, ladies, gentlemen?
Mr. Chair, we have about seven minutes remaining.
How are you, sir?
I'm good. I'll try to be quick. Good evening. Charles Davis, Ann Coach Street. In reviewing the materials, I just want to point your direction to a few things. Under the applicant's request, section D, the question reads, "Does proposed amendment reasonably promote the public health, safety, or general welfare?" The answer is yes. The proposed warehouse development has the potential to be a catalyst for additional new mixed-use development in the area. In particular, the addition of the warehouse facilities could lead to live, work, play types of development. Don't know if I agree with that. I also direct your attention to page forty-five of submitted materials. The material submitted by ARC in the comment section says, "In addition, we have listed recommendations for regional, industrial, and logistical areas, which is becoming the predominant use in the area." Becoming the predominant use in the area. Also, page seventy-eight, Larry Tony of the Planning Commission voted to approve and put in his comments, "No reason not to approve. It's just another couple of warehouses." While I disagree with the bulk of us, I do agree that this site will influence the adjacent sites. Industrial is the predominant use of the area. I disagree. A new warehouse leading to live, work, play developments? I don't know how. The additional traffic a good thing? Again, I don't know how. Just another couple of warehouses? Unfortunately, maybe to him, but not to the people that live there. I want to talk to you about the impact of the community and schools in the community. Again, I'm a resident of the Tributary. My son attends New Manchester High Elementary School. I'm on the PTA. I'm the treasurer of the PTA, so I understand the impact of the school and the community and how they work together. New Manchester Elementary School has eight-hundred-and-eighty-five students, seventy, which is the largest school in the county, largest elementary school in the county. Seventy percent of the students receive free lunch. Student-to-teacher ratio is sixteen to one. It is extremely difficult to have a strong community without strong schools. It is even more difficult to have strong schools without a strong community. The area between Fairburn and Fulton is a community. The schools in the area are on the rise. The county has an active plan in place to make these schools some of the most attractive schools in the area, comparable to Chapel Hill schools. The only way that they can achieve this goal is with a strong community. Volunteers comes from the community. Support comes from the community. Mentors comes from the community, not just another couple of warehouses. We, as the taxpaying residents, are doing our part to ensure that these are some of the most desirable schools in the, in the state. As the quality of the schools continue to rise, desirability of the area will grow. As the area is more desirable, we will see more rooftops. As we see more rooftops, taxpayer revenue increases. As we see more rooftops, we will see an increase in retail shops that the area desperately needs and the residents are crying out for. The decisions that you make today can lead to a sustainable community that your residents can enjoy for decades. I say can lead to, because if we continue to allow light industrial to invade this area, we are telling residents that we do not want them here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Someone else?
Thank you, everyone. My name is Andrea Jones-Dur. My address is seventeen oh five Bankwell Close Way, Lithia Springs. You'll notice my address is Lithia Springs, which means I'm in Riverbanks. When I moved into Riverbanks fourteen years ago, my husband and I have been there since two thousand and six, there was one warehouse, which is located where Metline is now. So we've seen the warehouses grow up around us. One of the issues we have is our property value. Our property value is currently seventy-four percent of our purchase price fourteen years ago. Whereas you may not expect an increase, you certainly don't expect that much of a decline. Additionally, we have experienced the trucks, as others have, but we hear the noise. We hear the trucks backing up, so we hear the beep, beep, beep. That's something that you can hear into the night, been out at night, early in the morning, walking, running the neighborhood, and we hear that noise. And it impacts our peace and our otherwise quiet. And finally, also with the trucks, my husband was actually hit by a truck, and they said that they could not see him. There was no damage, but they said they couldn't see him. So this just shows that that mix is not healthy for our community. And for brevity, I will end here. I encourage you to please consider denying this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Someone else?
Council members, Whitney Kenner-Jones, thirty-two-eleven Ann Coach Street, and I do apologize, our time is getting low, so I'm rushing. You guys asked for new information that people had not presented yet. The first thing that I want to mention is that they spoke about all the agencies and entities that they reached out to in regards to what the impact is going to be, including the police department, but I did not hear any reference to whether or not there was going to be an impact or harm for the fire department that is located on Riverside. The fire department currently services not just Tributary and the neighborhoods on Riverside, but they also service the neighborhoods down ninety-two and one-sixty-six. They cannot get down already with the increase of truck traffic to my mom's neighborhood in Riverside, down to our old neighborhood in Anawaki Falls and Anawaki Trails, and God forbid, someone's house burns because they could not make a left turn onto Fairburn Road because of the increase in truck traffic. Aside from that, I currently am a practicing juvenile dependency attorney, and the one issue that has not been addressed is how the largest portion of children that are removed in Douglas County, when you alleviate the issues with drug dependency, come from houselessness and homelessness and instability for places for them to reside with their family. Douglasville does not have a shortage of warehouses. They do not have a shortage of distribution centers, but what we do have a shortage of is affordable apartment multifamily use housing that could give children and their families safety and security to know that they have somewhere that they can lay their head at night, and this proposal simply does not address that issue. To take up ninety-five-point-five-two acres of viable land from children who can't study, can't focus in school, can't be high achievers, cannot be the dreamer that I've been fortunate enough to be because they don't have somewhere safe to reside with their families. My family moved to Douglas County in two thousand and seven, just a few months before the Street of Dreams opened. I paid my fourteen dollars at least three times to come and tour Tributary neighborhood, fell in love with it, determined twelve years ago that I was going to live on Ann Coach Street. Because I was fortunate enough to have parents that had security and housing, access to adequate food sources, that this, in its current zoning, could meet all of those needs for these children. It has the option and the potential to have grocery stores come here because it's a mixed use. We can have that residential and shopping aspect of it. Those kids can come, get invested in this community, have a safe, adequate place to live, have adequate to, have access to adequate shopping opportunities, fall in love with the community that I did, and become taxpaying contributors to this community. Stay here. Literally, twelve years has passed since I made a commitment to myself that I was going to live on Ann Coach Street, and that is where I am now. What Ms. Davis said is true. Millennials are looking at Douglas County. They don't want to live in Atlanta. You want that type of ingenuity, that type of drive, that, that grit to make their community the strongest community in the place that they are going to live, and we can have that in Douglas County. But again, my most important point is I see children every single day forced to live in extended stays, in hotels with their parents, at a higher cost than what it would cost to rent most average apartments because there is simply not enough affordable housing in this area. So I really do ask and implore you to voic- no to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Time, Ms. Jackson?
We have one minute remaining.
Anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Don Watts. I live at ninety-nine-twelve Ashford Greenway and, in Douglasville, and in the Tributary subdivision. And my wife and I have a little bit of a, a unique honor of having lived in both the Riverbanks, as we moved there in two thousand and six, and now in the Village. And what I can say and, and, and speak to this situation is that we have seen the, the changes since two thousand and six with all the warehousing, the traffic increase and so forth. My wife and I, in two thousand and six, were very excited about being able to build this new home for ourselves. It was our first house together to build. And we sat at the lot, basically empty, for a few hours, two thousand and six, remember, summer, and peace, quiet. We sat there and just loved what we were feeling, the tranquility, the essence of just being there in peace and rest. And of course, all that changed after a few years of being there as residents and the warehousing starting. And I can speak truly to what someone else said about, you know, the backing up of the trucks, the, the horns in the night from some of the warehousing, the loud speakers. You can actually hear voices in the dead of the night in those places. It's annoying. It really is. In two thousand and eighteen, we moved to the Village and were able to purchase a home. But when we first put our home up for sale, we were offered full price by some potential buyers. Those potential buyers were excited. They rode through our community. They drove around, began to talk to some of the neighbors. One particular neighbor, don't know who it is, rather not know, told them, "You don't want to live here. There's too much traffic. There's too many trucks on this road. You can't even get out in the mornings." I mean, she was really putting it on thick. Five hours before the deadline, they withdrew their offer. Of course, we ended up selling the home for a little reduced price, but there's a good example of what's happening, and this is what we're hoping won't happen anymore. By stopping this particular style of growth, we need residential growth, not warehousing growth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. Jackson?
Mr. Fowler has two minutes.
Is there someone else that would like to speak in opposition? Please come forward. Yes, ma'am. Come right down.
Mr. Chairman, their time is up. Mr. Fowler has two minutes remaining for his rebuttal.
Okay, so we have given them twenty-plus, one, okay, so we have given them the same amount of time?
Yes.
Ma'am, come forward if you'd like to present something different. I'll, I'll, I'll let you do that since I'd already asked you to come down? All right. Thank you very much. Okay? Do I need to address him? How are you, Mr. Segal? It's good to see you this evening, sir. Okay, if the applicant had a rebuttal, we would allow that. Two minutes? Thank you.
Fortunately, the project is not like a residential subdivision that has a huge impact on schools. And I certainly understand what Mr. Davis said about the school system, primarily because this does not generate schools that will require the type of investment on the county and perhaps city's part in order to defray those expenses. What it does provide is employment opportunities for people in our community, and it also provides for tax monies to come into the city and county so that some of those expenses that were mentioned can be met. Do we need more rooftops in the Tributary and New Manchester area? Probably so. And I understand, as I mentioned earlier, you already have that before you concerning the, both apartments and retail, I think, and I'm not sure the density of the apartments. Will that be affordable housing? I'm not sure what the apartments will be. That was mentioned, I think, by Ms. Jones, that you need additional apartment living. I'm not sure what the rents for that would be, if it's affordable apartments, if it's low-income tax credit. I'm not sure of that, but I know you've got that before you. And finally, with respect to the staff report, you can read that for yourself, with respect to its analysis as to whether or not this project does or does not, in fact, meet the perfect intent of the UDO. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Are there any other questions or comments of council?
Mr. Chairman, just one quick question. The thirteen warehouses I've heard referred to, is that including what's being proposed, or that will add to the thirteen?
Mr. Fowler, could you answer that question? I'm, I'm not aware. You made that comment?
The thirteen are existing.
Thirteen are existing?
We're talking about two more, two more.
It includes Kihei and McMaster Car, which are closest tributary.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. That it? Anyone else? Okay, then we will close the public hearing. We will take this item up on Monday night for a vote. I want to thank each, the applicant and each of those that have spoken in opposition to it for your decorum, for your courtesy and for your respect of time. And we appreciate you coming in, and we'll take it up on Monday night. Madam Mayor, that's all that we have.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you handled that very well. And we thank the community, applicant and the citizens for coming out and voicing their opinions. So we will move on with the agenda to item number eleven, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have one, yes, I'm sorry, we do, yes. The one item right here that was tabled from our last round of meetings, and that is to authorize the mayor to sign change order number two for revisions to the city's construction agreement of the June twelfth, two thousand nineteen with Ray Lynn and Associates for the Courthouse Square project at Old City Hall. And I know, like...
To Roberts, I believe.
Hmm?
Madam Chair, I can cover that. I will say that due to social distancing guidelines, we are waiting for staff to come in. We did limit the capacity for the auditorium for twenty-five individuals. So all of the citizens are walking out and staff is walking in to handle the remaining items.
Okay, so we'll give everyone a few minutes. I should have had a recess. Mr. Roberts?
Yes, we have Ms. Amy Tissencheck, who will be speaking from CPS. She's the project manager who's been overlooking Ray Lynn during this entire time.
Okay.
Right, so you guys just want to hang tight for a minute?
You can take a C-Law, take a break.
Yeah, I like it.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. We appreciate you. I know we...
We had a little crowd to get through out there.
Yes, sir.
Greg Roberts, Director of the Public Services Department for the City of Douglasville. I have with me Amy Tissencheck with CPS and Sean Craig with CPS. And Ms. Amy will explain a lot of this in great detail, and then I can fill in whatever questions you might have along with her. And are there any questions before she makes the presentation? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So what I can do is go through some of the big picture items of the change order. This is change order number two for Ray Lynn for the Courthouse Square project. We came to you later in the year, last year, with change order one. This is some follow-up work that has been done. Some of the big picture items on this, when we had met previously, we talked about that there would be additional general conditions for some of the unforeseen work that had to be done. So that included the asbestos removal. And then also, we had some delays because of roof redesign that had to take place. So what you're seeing on this change order, there is additional general conditions. We were delayed about eight weeks, together with the asbestos removal. And then also, we experienced several weeks of rain. So the contractor could not really do a whole lot on the inside of the building until we got that, the roof buttoned up. Excuse me. Another, a couple other items on there is we had some additional scope of work added, some added card readers and some hardware changes. On the facade of the building, we changed that up. Originally, there was only supposed to be pretty much a, a flat face on the building. Once the roof was removed, that did expose a grade beam along the whole front of the building. And so to cover that up, what we decided to do is go ahead and do kind of a trim piece on that front to dress it up. We also added some electrical items along the way, some I T. items. And then there was a little bit of redesign on the first and second floors. And if you have any specific questions about any of those PCOs, I can, I can go over those with you.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions, comments? Yes, Madam Mayor?
I do. Thank you so much, Ms. Chairman. Thank you so much for coming in, Mr. Robertson, Ms. Tissencheck. I did have a question about the grinding. Did you anticipate this in the beginning or for the, the concrete grinding area?
On the basement.
Has it expanded?
Yeah, so what happened down in that basement level, there were so, actually several different layers and levels down in that, that basement area. So once they took the flooring up, they had to go ahead and get all of the loose concrete, loose adhesive up. Once they got that up, they had to go back and, and level that floor to put the new LVT down on. So that was, that's actually an unforeseen cost.
Okay, I do understand. We just have a historic home and this, you discovering things.
Absolutely.
Well, I thought I was getting one thing, and it's something totally different. And so then the install, you said, the floor to where you can install the carpet tile in the basement. So you're going to replace it with carpet and tile?
The flooring's already down.
Okay.
Yeah, this, this is prep work that had to be done to put the, the flooring down.
Okay.
You had to basically level that floor out. There was a lot of inconsistencies of where the old flooring was taken up. So in order to, you know, make that suitable for the, the new flooring to, you know...
Had to be done. And it didn't affect the foundation or anything?
The area that she's referring to is where the old fire station was there. And so, once the demolition project came in, I, I don't want to exaggerate it because I do not exactly remember, but there was about a four-inch difference, maybe more.
Yeah.
And it was, it was a trip hazard, sorry, Fire Department. It was a trip hazard for them for all those years. But it made, it was prudent to not leave that. And so as a part of the demolition and removal of walls and, and the addition of new walls that would go in there, that flooring had to be taken out of there, ground out of there. And so that was a lot of...
That's the cost.
Yep, to me ADA as well.
That really could not be done until we got to that point. And, and, and yes, a lot of the expense of this property, as we've talked about over the last couple of years, has a lot to do with making it ADA accessible.
Yes, sir.
As some of the council members may remember, a few years ago, we were deciding whether to sell the building, whether to let it sit there and continue having the TV Sheriff's Department operate out of it.
Stranger things.
Or, or something. And, and I felt like the city made the right decision to renovate it because with it being a split-level commercial building with basically a basement, I just don't know that anybody else could have corrected that property to make it ADA accessible. And so, and then to make it, you know, with fire requirements and safe, fire and safety requirements. And so there were a lot of things that we found as we were opening up, and we, we knew we would. We didn't know what we would find, but we knew we would find things. And so that's the area she's referring to.
And it wasn't in contingency? It wasn't, you know, that you put on the side to just for the what-if, question mark?
Well, we did use, we would have used contingency to pay for that, the leveling of that floor.
Okay.
That's the, again, that's something unforeseen, and that's where you use your contingency money.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Adams?
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Just a question to the group. So we're basically complete except for the exterior facade on the front as far as paint and ready to occupy. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's a few minor items that the contractor is taking care of, kind of some late adds, some hardware changes, some small things. But other than that, they are in the building, using the building, and punch items are, are completed, so...
So that, that situation has turned out well with the contractor? Worked out well?
Yep, it did.
The elephant in the room question. How much over budget are we?
Uh, based on, well, you want to go? So based on the April projection, we projected two-point-one-five-four, four-three-five. Where we're going to end up as our final budget is two million, one-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-one. So we're about twenty thousand under at that point.
The adjusted, the adjusted budget? The adjusted budget for the changes?
Adjusted budget, yep. The original budget was actually just under two million, right? So kind of how that plays out overall is unforeseen items came down to two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five. We had some value engineering included, a little over ninety-one thousand. And then owner change request was a hundred-and-eighty-seven, three-fifty-three. So we, we did really well in our contingency. We didn't use as much F F and E that we thought we were going to. So we did have some savings with that. So when you add our owner contingency, we had a hundred-and-forty-two thousand, five-eighty-two included in the original budget. And when we add the leftover from F F and E, we're about twelve thousand over on that.
Thank you. That's all that I had. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I didn't know if your, if your intent was to put it on the consent agenda. I just wanted to ask your permission to spend the weekend looking over the numbers a little more closely. I hadn't had a chance to go over them in any detail. So two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars worth of change orders. It's eighteen percent of the cost of the projects. I just wanted to have, spend a few days extra looking at the numbers.
No, that, that's absolutely fine with me. Yeah.
That's all.
Okay. Are there any other questions, though, guys?
Madam Chair, I just have a question. Thank you so much for your specific details in regards to the, the budget. And thank you, Councilman Adams, for that question as well. When is the actual completion date? When are you looking at the completion date for...
For courthouse? It's already completed.
Okay, so...
Yeah, we've already gotten substantially, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
They are in, we're...
As related to what Ray Lynn and CPS were doing.
Yep.
But during the process of this facility, when we went into this project, and this is part of a, a little bit of a change order aspect of this as well, as some of you recall, the yellow brick exterior, not what was there before, but we could see on some sides where that yellow brick that you can see now on the backside. The intent was that we were going to restore all of that and let that be the exterior and then add the trim to kind of draw it in. The problem was, and I suppose the city did it about sixty years ago, fifty years ago, but when they added those little narrow bricks that were on there for about fifty years, when we took those off, the materials they used to attach that to that building, no contractor, we had several come in, tried to tell us that they could remove that and restore that. And they, they, all of them would try, but they would not tell us that they could perform it. And then that's when, so we backed out about thirty-five thousand dollars from the Ray Lynn contract from that point and seal process. That's when we brought in Garland Industries, you remember, and they're going to correct the exterior for, for sixty-six thousand dollars. And one of the key points on that is that building was built around nineteen thirty-nine, nineteen forty. I, I do not know the exact year, but it's about eighty years old. And so the mortar, you can't see it from the ground, but when you get up there and look at the mortar, there, there are gaps you can stick your finger in. So we know we're catching water from that. And so a lot of that has to be corrected, and that's a part of the Garland Industries, the same people that painted City Hall and the Welcome Center. They're also doing the Wellness Center, and they will do our facility. And I think that was part of Mr. Adams' question on the exterior painting. I hope, and as a part of the COVID-nineteen shutdowns, the Garland Industries that make their components, which held both of those projects up, there, a lot of their industry components were shut down during that process, so they didn't make a lot of their materials. And so those materials are coming in. They started on the Wellness Center yesterday on the roof. We took the on and off. I know you're not looking for that tonight, but that's, that's where we're at on that one. And then on our facility, those materials should be available the last week of June into the last week of July. And so hopefully in a month from now, we can talk about West Courthouse Square and Wellness Center, and they're done and completed. And, and just some of the little changes, Councilmember Miller, and we can talk about those. You can, we can talk about it on Saturday if you want to. But like the oning that we're going to have on the, on the Courthouse Square building, there was a small oning on it before, but because of where the pedestal landed for the handicap access, we realized, and I, and I'll admit, I made the verbal change on that because someone in a wheelchair trying to access our building, they'd have to sit in the rain while that door opened. So we extended the canopy to cover that area so it wouldn't be a point of contention at some point in time down the road for somebody. And so it was just things like that that were needful during the process. And then just one last thing. So the two-seventy-one, four-ninety-five, fifty-five, which is this change order, basically that equates to, we will need to, Ms. Callan and I talked about it, she's not here tonight, but we will be coming back to you to do a budget adjustment for basically two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars out of the sanitation fund to cover this. So it's not coming out of any, any other funds. And, and sanitation fund is, is an important aspect, but what you will find out also through Ms. Ca, Ms. Callan and myself, I'm sorry, I call her Ms. Callahan all the time. But Ms. Callan and myself, our, even though we had the COVID-nineteen and the economic downturn, our numbers have held steady on sanitation. And so we're actually looking good on those numbers, much better than we had expected it to be right now. And that's probably because some of those key businesses like Walmart and Sam's, they have really been rolling those containers. And so it's a catch-22, I suppose. But I want to be transparent about it. If you've got any questions about any of this, call me. But it is, it is complicated. That's the reason we tabled it two weeks ago. I wasn't prepared to come in here and say all of this tonight, so you're welcome.
No other questions, Madam Chair?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I thought you said you had one more. Thank you guys very much for all that information because you guys covered every little point that I had in my head that I wanted to let you guys know about. Were there any more questions or comments, Council?
I had one, but Chair answered it. I say, is that it? Is any mode of inspected change orders? We good?
Say that again? I'm sorry.
Would that be any more? Are we, great?
There will be one that is probably between five and seven thousand. And that was for some of the late adds that the contractor is taking care of right now. And that one includes changing up some hardware items and some other smaller miscellaneous things where adds at the end.
All right.
Thank you. There you go, guys. If there are no more questions or comments, that's all we have this evening.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. We'll move on to item number twelve, which is Public Relations Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Public Relations Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, ma'am. I have one hard one here. It's going to take a minute with this one. Item A, reappoint B Keith Rollins as Chief Municipal Court Judge for the term of July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and authorize the mayor to sign an employment agreement with him, with him for the purpose Judge Rollins. Okay, City Manager, if Judge Rollins want to come down?
Yes, sir. We do have Mr. Judge Rollins here, but this is a routine agreement that we enter into every year regarding his employment agreement. This is for the upcoming fiscal year. That covers him stating that he'll work a part-time position covering seven days per week. We pay him... We pay him monthly, and it also states that with this appointment, he does receive health benefits as well as other benefits that other employees receive for the city as well. It talks about his scope of services as well as the judicial independence and administration. And like I said, the compensation, it talks about termination of agreement if that was to happen and any amendments. But he is here if you all have any further questions for him.
Come around, uh, I'm going to say Pastor, Pastor Rollins, but come around, Judge, Judge Rollins.
They accuse me of preaching sometimes, so.
I want to thank you for such a good job, where, job you do, Judge Rollins. And, and I'm, right now, I'm going to give all the mayor and all the council members to have any questions to talk. Start with Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Judge Rollins, hello. It's good to see you and your beautiful bride here this evening. I wanted to say it's my pleasure, if the council so desires for me to sign an agreement with you for another year. We really, really appreciate everything that you've done in our courts. You've made our, our system municipal courts a stellar court. The experience, I've been told time and time again, you know, I can sneak in and see what you're doing, and you, you're just doing a fabulous job. Thank you so much for being like a pine tree and not an oak, that you are bending and you're flexible to changes that happen with new court administrators and all types of things. So, thank you so much. It's a coveted place that the bayless want to work. So, we thank you so much for everything that you've done and that you've done and that you're doing in the city and over our municipal courts. So, thank you, sir, for your service. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any other council members?
I just want to echo that, Mr. Chairman, to, to our judge. I appreciate it very much, what you do for us and the job that you do, how complete you are with the job, and I, I hear nothing but good things, nothing. And I, I treasure that relationship, and we hope that it can continue. I do have a question. Are we only doing a one-year contract now in, in these contracts? I don't know why I was under the impression it was a multi-year, two-year contract. Did we go back to one year? Looks as though we did in this, in this particular document.
May, may I help you? The, the reason we do a one-year contract is because your charter gives him a one-year term.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Judge. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other council member? Councilmember Miller?
The periodical, uh, tran- I don't want to say transcripts, but testimonials continue to come. I look forward to them. When I see your, your teeny writing, I know it's from you. I look, I'm excited to see those letters. So, continue to send those. They're very encouraging.
We are, we are back up and running, and hopefully those will continue.
Yes, sir.
I, I have, no, probably should be questioning the applicant with, you know, some good gotcha questions, but I won't. No, I've heard nothing but good stories coming out of your court. And, and the fact that, you know, you've changed lives, and, and that, that means a lot. I mean, it's, it's, it's not a matter of, you know, the, the Supreme Court, they say they call, they call balls and strikes, but you, you apparently changed the game for a number of people. So, thank you very much for what you've done.
Thank you for that.
That's, Dr. LaShaw?
Councilman Davis, just want to say, Judge Rollins, you're absolutely amazing and awesome. If you, if councilmembers and mayor, if you have not had a chance to sit in the courtroom and see Judge Rollins in action and the staff, you are missing a treat. So, I just want to say I've seen you in action. I've seen you on and off the bench and your lovely wife. Thank you. Just want to say it is, it is an honor to have you to preside in our municipal court. Thank you.
Thank you for that very much.
Anyone else?
Chairman, I just wanted to tell us, Mr., my relationship with Mr. Rollins, Judge Rollins goes back to probably one of the first loans that I closed on the first house we had and done ever since. Just appreciate the job that he does for the city, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
He closed on our first house, too.
Anyone else? Judges, anything that you'd like to tell us, anything we need to do to help you along the way?
For continued support for what we're doing down there. When Ms. Cochran or Ms. Roberts is, has her substitute tonight comes to you with things, things that we asked for, I assure you are always thought through and prepared for and is something that we would always feel that it will best serve this city and let us do our job better in serving the citizens of this city. That is the support that we need and is always appreciated when y'all come through for something like that.
Thank you, Judge Rollins. I'm going to ask you to come back on Monday night. I'd just love to see you come in. Come back on Monday night, Judge Rollins. We're going to make this city. I want to see the hands go up. And, and you have a great weekend, and that's all I, yeah. Thank you, Judge Rollins.
Thank you, sir.
If I may, I will thank you for the opportunity that y'all have given me to serve the mayor and council, the citizens of this city, and our, our city of Douglasville for all, for these years. And I will continue to use my best efforts to make sure that we continue to have that service and reports that you hear of, of that. And I love my job. Y'all have heard me say that for quite a few years, and I still love it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Judge Rollins. Thank you all. Okay, Madam Mayor, we move on to item B, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with B, B one, B one S Digital INC. for computer, software, and hardware for use of the municipal court, Ms. Angie Cochran.
We have Ms. Christine Roberts that'll come down and explain this item.
Come on down, Ms. Roberts.
B I S.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am standing in. I'm Christine Roberts. I'm the senior court clerk for the City of Douglasville Municipal Court. Ms. Cochran normally would be the person to be here, but tonight, but unfortunately, she got very ill at work today and had to go home. So, I'm here in her place. So, be easy on me. Um, I, if I may, would like to take the opportunity to, to just thank the judge, council, mayor, everything that you guys do to support us. We love our jobs. We're very grateful for Judge Rollins and what he does. And you are exactly correct. He changes a lot of lives. And from our perspective, it makes it, for me, it makes it so much more than just going to work. It gives us an opportunity to see people's lives changed, and I get something out of that. That, that means a lot to me. So, if I could, I wanted to. This, uh, but the item on the agenda tonight, we, um, part of the responsibility of our court is we record the entire court session from the beginning to the end. This is the company that we've had our contract with for several years now. It's my understanding this is just something that we have to come back every year and have that approval for that. No change in cost. Everything's the same. They're very, very easy to work with. We've never had an issue with them, any kind of software issues. They come out, they do what they need to do, and we're grateful for it. So, that is the only thing we have.
Okay. Any questions from mayor, Madam Mayor?
No, sir, I don't have any. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Thank you.
It's my pleasure. I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Monday. Your councilor. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on from Public Safety to Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Coach. Technology Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Protem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time with the Technology Committee.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. Transportation Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we have one item, and the item reads as follows. Adopt the Fairburn Road Plan as a livable centers initiative, which is also known as the LCI. Plan and submit the plan to the Atlanta Regional Commission, and we'll have comments by Ms. Wright.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is a plan that came about because of the State Route Ninety-two relocation project. And this is a piece of the state route that will no longer become a state route, and we're looking at making it into a streetscaping project, the Fairburn Road and a portion of Bankhead Highway. I'm sorry, Michelle Wright, sixty-seven oh one Church Street Planning Manager. And so, I have with us here AECOM, Mickey O'Brien, and he is with AECOM, and they worked on the plan. And the reason we're bringing this before you is because we would like you to adopt this plan so that we can submit it to the Atlanta Regional Commission and look for federal funding with the Atlanta Regional Commission under the LCI program and GDOT under their various programs for this. And I have Mickey O'Brien here. And if you turn to your first attachment, that's the slideshow presentation. And if you go to just the beginning, it says Fairburn Road, Veterans Memorial Highway Complete Street Trail Scoping Study. And that's where it'll start, and he'll make the presentation. Did all of you get it, or?
Yes. Can everyone, does everyone have the attachment?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bryant?
Well, good evening, Mayor Robinson.
Good evening.
City council members, city staff, and, and citizens of Douglasville. My name again is Mickey O'Brien. I am with AECOM. I'm at thirteen sixty Peachtree Road in Midtown. We're an engineering and architect, engineering and design firm. It's always an honor and a privilege for me to come to Douglasville, especially tonight because you're actually the, the first ones I've, I've met with and spoken to live since all of this has gone down. It's all been remote, so it's really an honor to be here, especially tonight. So, the purpose of this presentation is to provide you with an overview of the project. About eighteen months ago, we embarked on this project. And as Michelle said, it's really to give you an overview. We have a, a much more comprehensive document that covers everything from topography to land use and, and slope analysis and things like that. But we're just going to provide you with an overview as, as briefly as I can, because I know it is getting kind of late. And, and obviously, the end goal here is to seek funds through ARC. And we've got some pretty good news. I'll share on that here shortly. So, we're going to move on here. So, the city's been presented with a very unique and extraordinary opportunity here. And it's really to transform a, a state route which was designed exclusively for cars back in the eighties with really little to no regards to the pedestrians or the multimodal or, or people with disabilities even. And so, the city now has an opportunity, and, and, and we were able to procure the letter from GDOT to the city, deeding this over. And so, the city will now have the opportunity to transform this section of road into a street for all people, regardless of their abilities. A place where people can meet, they can converse. You don't have to blow your horn and wave if you see someone you know. A, a place that will encourage development as well and, and, and a safer, much more appealing environment with street trees and street lights. So, again, the city's really got a great opportunity here. In front of you, you, you see the project limits. I will talk through them. The project starts on the east at Hospital Drive, and it actually heads, and, and, excuse these numbers in the bottom, they're, they're, they're not right. It heads about point seven, uh, eight miles to the west to Veterans Memorial Highway. And then along Veterans Memorial Highway to the east, the Shared Use Path Trail Connection is about point six, seven miles roughly. All right, so we're going to move on here. So, the process here, we've conducted site visits. We've evaluated the traffic. We prepared a concept development project or phase with city staff who were very, very helpful in helping us right-size the street. We had a public information open house on September the eighteenth. We developed a GDOT concept report, which ARC was actually very impressed, the, the staff's recommendation. It just advances the project that much more. And then we have agency coordination, and we had a call back in, I believe it was April, right, Michelle? And we presented the project to ARC, and it was very, very well received. Basically, we were told the project checked all the boxes for these types of projects that we're trying to achieve. So, you know, this, this collaboration with city staff, the public, and, and, and the leadership of the city has, has helped us get that much further. And this is the initial phase. These are big projects that take a lot of work and time, but we're headed in the right direction. Next, really, the, the need and purpose of the project really is to convert it again from a, a car-centric road to a more complete street that balances the needs of all users, you know? A place that you want to go to, destination, shade trees, street trees, pedestrian lights, so forth. Also establishing a new gateway or front door into the city. A quick statistic, I ran some numbers. You've got about seven million people per year that drive down Fairburn Road. All right, think of all the impressions the people see as they're looking for or trying to find that charming downtown you have. There's over forty million people that drive on I-20 out there. So, there's a great amount of people you can influence. So, let's do this, right? Let's do it right. Promote health and wellness through safe, alternative means of transportation. Get people outside, you know? And serve as a catalyst for economic development. I've seen over and over that private investment typically follows public investment. Moving on real quick, we did a traffic analysis using the approved GDOT traffic report. And the numbers with a growth rate that was projected and coordinated with ARC finds the section of road, once the bypass is built, to be an acceptable level of service for creating a, a street like we're talking about. Sixty percent diversion of traffic is projected through the GDOT traffic analysis. This will need to be revisited, by the way, in future phases. All right, so we talked about all the opportunities, or, you know, the charming downtown. I, you know, I'd say the City of Douglasville is probably a leader in adaptive, historic adaptive reuse for a town this size. You know, keep doing it. Keep promoting it. Build on it. Even your new architecture, take elements of that, you know, and, and sprinkle it in there, like you've done with the amphitheater and some of the, the spaces around the town, O'Neill Plaza. Continue doing those things, you know? We'll move on, you know? Just not going to speak to all, all these different items, but the way you're, you're preserving history and you're celebrating it, continue to do that, and don't forget about the little things. The little things matter. The picture frames in O'Neill Plaza, I spent this day walking around, looking and learning, and just those things really matter. Keep it up. It's great work. All right, let's talk about some of the existing conditions real quick, real. So, we're looking down on Fairburn Road. It's a five-lane road. Frankly, there's no cars in this section of road when, when the, the aerial was taken. But you can see at the top, you got a roughly a hundred-foot right-of-way. It's all dedicated to cars. And I'm looking down at an aerial with no car shown at all. By the way, on the east side of Fairburn Road, there is no sidewalk, no sidewalk at all. This is unacceptable for the City of Douglasville. This is not what your downtown is about, and this is not what the future of Douglasville is about. But this isn't something y'all have created. This is a state route. And now you have the opportunity to build and, and approve, and improve on it. A couple of other things, you have a lot of curb cuts out there, things of consolidating that, interparcial connectivity. That's a whole nother topic. We'll have to address it another time. Your building setbacks, we'll talk about that in a minute, but it, they are set back a minimum of fifty feet from, from the right-of-way. Well, what that does is promote curb cuts and parking and stuff all out front. So, an overlay zone will need to be as provided as part of this. Some additional photographs, not going to go through all of these, but you do have overhead utilities. Okay. Again, this shows the tree-lined road. I'm on great streets promote civic pride for citizens and positive lasting memories for visitors. I skipped forward a few. I'm on slide thirteen. This zooms in. This zooms in. In the document, you can see enlargements of this, but you can see the dash red line there. That's the closest a building can be positioned to the right-of-way. Again, that promotes car-centric development. Raised intersections, these are great traffic calming options that you see here. You can actually have the flexibility to reduce your speed limit in this section of road now. Again, existing conditions, I'm going to zip through here. This shows the same location and this really kind of calls out the different features that we would be proposing. And a cross-section that shows how the pedestrian and cycling zone is as wide or more, as wide as the car. Two lanes of traffic with on-street parking. Moving forward along Veterans Memorial, you'll see where we're proposing a shared use path that is roughly eight to ten foot wide. And the buffer is roughly five to eight foot wide, which follows all ASHTO criteria. And this would start at Fairburn Road and head east across the bridge and down around and connect with the multi-use trail built as part of the bypass project. Lastly, planning level cost estimate for Fairburn Road is approximately twelve million four hundred thousand dollars. That includes a twenty percent contingency. And for the shared use path project, it's roughly, approximately one million eight hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and twenty dollars with a twenty percent contingency. These are some photographs of renderings. And this is actually the type of building relationship on the last slide that we would like to see in conjunction to the street, promoting a street for all and not just cars. So, with your help and our ongoing support, we can make this a reality and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. O'Brien. This is very exciting. We are in the impact mode. So, with the Highway ninety-two project going forth and definitely we have always talked about Fairburn Road and bringing it up to the highest standards of what we can. Do we have any comments or questions from our mayor and council?
Yes ma'am.
Quick comment?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Wright and Mr. O'Brien. I almost didn't recognize you without your scooter.
I know. Thank you.
But it's really great. I'm excited, as the chair has said, this really is a turning point for this area. And seven million cars is a lot of cars driving on Fairburn Road. But this LCI project can really turn the area around and we're excited that you secured the rights to have the road from GDOT. So, thank you for all of your hard work, Ms. Wright, and we appreciate it. Mr. O'Brien, thank you for your time and coming in and showing us. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Yes ma'am. Any other comments? Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Madam Chair, I appreciate you acknowledging the setback issue that I brought up. That's, to me, is absolutely critical to change the environment. All the sidewalks and buffers and landscaping in the world won't matter unless you have the right setbacks.
Establish to build too long.
Yeah, we've got to move that closer to the street.
Yes.
But I think there's a lot of good work on here and I think I'm looking forward to seeing it as a genuine boulevard rather than a highway.
Yeah, exactly. Right, a place others can admire and talk about.
I would mention one thing about the cross-section on Memorial, Veterans Memorial, which is you may want to think about, well, I don't know what your leeway is to work on the railroad side, but if we could get some landscaping on there, if we can get the approval. I don't know if there's a process to do that.
Yeah, so I did, I did speak with Norfolk Southern about the shared use path on that side. That was really the first effort. And they actually have it written in their right-of-way guide that discourages it or doesn't discourage it, forbids it. I do think there's some opportunities though that we could get landscaping in over there, to your point. Just not a shared use path. Especially as you terminate Fairburn. Yeah, it'd be a nice.
I don't know that anybody would really want to be walking or biking along.
Right, it's very steep. Yeah, and fast too, yeah.
I think landscaping, now they may have issues with sparks or something coming from the train. That might be why they discourage landscaping, but it's certainly worth pursuing to find out.
Right, yeah, and maybe an ornamental fence of some sort too, you know, a decorative. But yeah, those things are all worth revisiting. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This may be a question for Ms. Wright, Mr. O'Brien, but either one. Just want to make sure that this basically addresses the area that was not previously involved in an LCI study as to what we would do in that corridor in or around the Hospital Drive intersection. Does it include all the way to, it does not include all the way down to Hospital Drive, does it, Ms. Wright?
Yes, it does include all the way down to Hospital Drive.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure on the map I could find that. But that would then really close the box, so to speak, as to addressing the roads that are being changed from state highway to city street in an LCI, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
The last piece.
The Dallas Highway one, portion of Strickland and then Fairburn and Veterans Memorial Highway.
Okay, good job, looks good, thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments? When does this application need to be submitted to ARC?
There is no time deadline, but what I'd like to do is as soon as you get adopted, is submit it with a letter from the mayor to ARC asking them to accept this plan. In order to get money, every street or project has to be in a plan and it usually has to be accepted by ARC and GDOT.
Correct, okay. So, I did see the mayor's letter attached to, attached to this, so it looks like it's all packaged and ready to go?
Yes, it is. If you approve it on Monday night, then we can send it out the following.
Are there any objections to add this to the consent agenda? No? Yay, all right, sounds like we're ready.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much again, Ms. Wright and Mr. O'Brien. And no other items under transportation, Madam Mayor.
Oh, thank you so much, Madam Chair, for transportation. Item seventeen, this other business, do we have any other business from council members to come before council tonight? No, I, Mayor Pro Tim? Okay, there are a couple of things, I just wanted to give announcements. We, of course, we've had three protest marches in the city of Douglasville as the spotlight is on America about the ills in society that we're trying to transition out of with racism. And so, all three were peaceful. And so, we do have two or three more that we have scheduled. So, one is Saturday at O'Neill Plaza, twelve-thirty in the afternoon. It's a young lady from Chapel Hill High School. She's a twenty-twenty graduate and she has taken a challenge from CNN, from a young man who asked students to come out, graduates to come out with their cap and gown and have a peaceful protest to talk about how they are, as the new graduates are leading the world into society and what they want to see, peace in the country. And so, that will take place in the afternoon and we, our police department is aware and they're there to support. And so, she's secured a permit and her name is Bethany McCullough. And again, she's an AP student from Chapel Hill High School, twenty-twenty graduate. She asked other graduates to come out and just have a peaceful protest and try to lead, say that they're going to be positive in the future. And so, that's on our plaza Saturday. Sunday, we have another march from the young man who had the previous march on Kroger, Hospital Drive from Kroger to Ingalls. And I'm not certain of the path, but he'll do that again as well. And Deputy Chief says that they're aware of that, so that's the other one. And then the last is Juneteenth Celebration Rally. It isn't really a march, this is just the Juneteenth Celebration that takes part every year. And this year, it's June the nineteenth from four to eight. And that will be on the plaza as well. So, those are the three upcoming events. Of course, we had a lot of conversation about the Fourth of July and we unfortunately are not going to have our annual Fourth of July parade because of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And we've decided to, hopefully, we'll have a better handle on things and we'll have the fireworks and all of that for Labor Day in looking at the Shriners to collaborate with them for the Labor Day parade. It's still on so far. And CEAC has taken their Taste of Douglasville and Chili Cookoff and they're combining it to the fall. So, I think it's in October. So, those are some of the announcements that I had under other business. I did want to recognize a former council member, Mayor Pro Tim, Mr. Siegel, in the audience as the chair had already recognized him. I don't know if you want to say anything during Citizens and Delegates, but we appreciate your time and coming out this evening. He said no. Okay, any other business to come before us this evening?
Madam Mayor.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you so much for mentioning the peaceful protest. Also, the police department is having something on Tuesday, is that correct?
How could I forget that one? That's the main one. It's Tuesday from six to seven-thirty at the, Tuesday?
Yes ma'am, it is Tuesday, June sixteenth at six PM at the police department.
Yes, from six to seven-thirty and it will be the police department opening up to, for the citizens and community to come and talk inside the municipal building. And so, it's the, our chief of police, the sheriff's department and leaders to come out. So, thank you so much. I knew it was three, Juneteenth threw me off, so.
You're good.
Well, thank you so much. Any other announcements or business to come before us this evening? Thank you, not seeing any, but they're going to updates from the city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson. Thank you so much, sir. Chief Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Susan Littlefield.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Our chief of police, our deputy chief, Deputy Chief Suzanne Shaw.
No business, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our city manager, Assistant City Manager, Ms. Chelsea Jackson.
Yes ma'am, just a few announcements. Deputy Chief has requested reports from her officers regarding the trucks parked on Riverside Parkway as well as any nine-one-one complaints and whatnot. So, you all will receive that, it'll be in your package on Monday. If we receive that beforehand, we'll also email that out to you as well. But she is working with the officers to ensure that you all have that information for Monday night's meeting. Also, staff is continuing to open up all of the city facilities. July one is the next date for our conference center to open up as well. And we'll continue to update you as the governor updates us on social distancing guidelines and the phases of opening up. Also, in your highlights tomorrow, you'll have a lot of information regarding the upcoming protests as well as further information from staff and guidance and whatnot. I also want to reiterate that we do have virtual camps going on. We have ages five to twelve at our, at Parks Department at our community center. So, June twenty-second, no, won't be at the community center, sorry. Our staff in the community center will actually be having that virtually. Ages five to twelve starts June twenty-second and July thirty-first. We also have our farmer's market that started on Tuesday, June ninth and will continue every Tuesday until September twenty-ninth. And that's a farmer's market. It's in the, right beside the old downtown precinct building in that parking lot. It'll be from three to seven PM every Tuesday. So, go out, our Keep Douglasville Beautiful Department has been doing that alongside a lot of other partners as it relates to the county and public health. So, please go out and support that. That is all I have. And I'll just add that Mr. Roberts will come up during staff reports to give you some announcements regarding the State Route ninety-two relocation bridge work.
Okay, I didn't have Mr. Roberts on the agenda, but we always love to hear from you. So, as he's coming, we did move the, the public health moved their COVID-nineteen testing site from Hunter Park back to the Public Health Department.
That last day was on June sixth.
Madam Mayor, one question I had about parks, have we opened up the playgrounds yet?
Yes, they are open.
Thank you.
And Hunter Park is open now, it doesn't, not from three, now it's open all day now since the testing site is gone.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
Yes, and I apologize, we didn't have anything on the agenda for this, but it came to me at three-thirty, three-forty-five today. So, our local GDOT District Seven reps had contacted me this afternoon. And as it relates particularly to the bridge at the, and we all know it as an underpass, but it's bridges that are creating the underpass. So, the railroad bridge is complete and the railroad's back on their new bridge. And East Strickland Street hopefully will be complete in the coming weeks. That one's coming along nicely. The one they're working on now is for Highway seventy-eight Veterans Memorial and doing the rock removal. And so, as we know, and we want them to, they've been doing, I guess, seismatology checks and checking the vibrations of the blasts. And for whatever reason, they have ran into issues there that's causing more vibration to pick up on their scales. And so, they are, they will continue to do some blasting as they've been doing, but they're going to switch more to a hammer drill. Now, the reason they're letting us know, the work will get finished just the same. It might be a slower project, but it shouldn't delay the project. But it's going to be extremely loud because rather than drilling into the rock and then doing the blast and blowing it this way, which causes a lot of vibration, they're going to have to go surface hammer drill. And so, it will do the job. That's the way they did it before they blasted, I guess. And, but it's going to be loud. And so, I don't know that we'll get complaints, but you're going, in that general area of that underpass work and the bridge work, the residents over there will hear that noise. It will all be done in daytime hours, the way we're used to them working. It won't be nighttime work. And so, I guess we'll play it by ear. They hope to have this equipment on-site the first of this coming next week. And those hammer drills probably be working as early as Tuesday or Wednesday.
Wow. Mr. Roberts, now, we did communications, is there any way we can let the residents know? I know in the past, we had maybe a flashing sign or we did some flyers or email or something.
Well, I don't have the staff to pass out flyers. We're averaging about. Okay, I can see what we can come up with over the weekend. And, yes, and I would think it would really only affect those people in that circle around those bridges, not the least of which is over Fulgham area and along East Strickland Street and that currently existing part of Brown Street there.
And how long, Mr. Roberts, is, are they going to be hammering like Thor in there, not the jackhammers?
Yeah, I would tell you they will be doing it, it'll probably, I'd be remiss to tell you the exactly how long, but my perception is that probably another month, six weeks or more. And, I mean, that'd be my expectation because, you know, they're having to blast, even when they're blasting, they're having to do a little bit, remove the rock. But if you hadn't been by there lately.
I went by.
The view that you have, the view that you have on that detour where you can look in there, now be careful if you do it, preferably somebody else is driving while you're looking because it's a sharp turn. But you can actually see through the other side, the opening is there. So, hopefully, hopefully, my estimate, and I'll get clarification on that of how long they say it'll take. But they weren't happy about it. They would rather do the blasting because they were really moving right along. And so, but we don't want them to damage properties either. And so, sort of a catch-twenty-two, as we say.
I understand. If we get some communications and flyers or whatever, email, reader boards, flyers, I'd be happy to help.
We will definitely get with Communications Department and have them to blast out some information.
Mayor and Council, our Community Relations Department has started utilizing what we call Nextdoor. It's a neighborhood app that has different neighborhoods sectioned off in the city of Douglasville. So, what we'll do is we'll send this information out to the neighborhoods in Nextdoor that this will impact. And so, they'll receive that information tomorrow. It's, well, it kind of works like Facebook. So, if you have a, for example, if you have part of a group on Facebook, once Allison, who's our social media coordinator, once she sends that information to that group, everyone who has registered or kind of liked that group page will receive that notification. And that's how Nextdoor works. Yes ma'am, I'll get Ms. Parker to send that out as well as Mr. Post to send it to you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Roberts. Alrighty, staff reports, that was Mr. Roberts. We have comments from Citizens and Delegates. If you sustain the meeting, you'd like to speak to us, you're welcome to come forward. You have five minutes to talk to us about anything you want to talk about.
Well, since you invited me, I haven't filled out the form yet, but I'll get it to Ms. Acker. Richard Siegel, nine-nine-zero-five Ashford Greenway. I look around this room and the world has changed since I was last here. And I noticed it and I see how you're socially dis- it, and I see how you're socially distanced and before you were online, so I just want to commend you on how well you've handled the changes that were thrust upon you you didn't ask for. Basically, had to start your budgeting process all over again because all the assumptions changed, you have to deal with how to accommodate large groups of people who would like to speak, but you can't have them all in here. The old days, we would have filled up this auditorium, I don't know if you all realize just how many people were waiting outside trying to get in here. I know some of you walked by and you saw some of them, but there were a lot of people out there, and this would have filled up. So, you had to make some hard decisions, nobody wants to cancel a parade, but it's the right thing to do, and I commend you all for doing the right thing. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Siegel, we're so proud of you. Thank you so much.
See, you can stay within five minutes, Richard.
Very good, thank you so much, Councilman Siegel. Once you're a councilman, you're always honorable, so, thank you for those comments. We have any other comments from citizens and delegates? If not, not seeing anything else, then this meeting is adjourned.